I'd like to call the meeting of the Willets City Council order for May 13th, 2015. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please join me. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Trump, Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Here.
Bernstein.
I'm here.
Mayor Burr.
I'm also here. So our first item this evening is public communications. Is there anybody in the community that wishes to address the council on something that is not on the agenda? No action will be taken, but we welcome your comments. Please limit them to about three minutes. Come up and introduce yourself and...
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Martin and tonight I'm representing, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Willets Senior Center. Just how many of us use the center and thrift shop? Last year, seventy-two thousand visits were made to the Willets Senior Center. Some people like it so much, they keep coming back. It's at the heart of the community. It's where people meet, socialize, and form friendships. Last year, they served thirteen thousand five hundred meals. Meals on Wheels alone served five thousand meals to homebound seniors and to disabled people. Transportation provided around ten thousand rides taking seniors and disabled people to doctor's appointments, shopping, and other destinations. The outreach program assistant advises seniors on financial matters, housing, doctors, home medical assistance, along with other senior and disabled needs. Education programs include computer classes, exercise, art lectures, and other. The Willets-Harris Center is in crisis right now. There's no other word for the dilemma that they're in. They need a new roof. The current roof has been patched for the past five years. Patches are leaking and a new roof is needed before the next winter rains begin. Bids to replace the room have come in between eighty-eight thousand to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. A bid of a hundred and four thousand dollars was chosen. In trying to help raise a hundred and four thousand dollars for new roof, they have engaged in a site called GoFundMe, where individuals can donate to the fund. To donate, go to GoFundMe, type in Willets or our zip code, look for a roof over our heads, and please help. The city of Willets helps the senior center with a yearly stipend to support the mentioned activities, the mentioned activities at the center. The Willets Senior Center is very grateful for this needed assistance that is used for the general fund, but tonight we're asking for additional funding to help solve the crisis of replacing a twenty-eight-year-old roof. We ask the city council to study the situation, take this request under consideration for the well-being of the senior center and the people that it serves. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I believe Dennis Minor would like to address the council on an issue that I suggested he come speak at this point.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for giving me the time to speak to the city council. I do have a proposal to make about our Vietnam veterans. Off the bat, I'll say it's a very serious topic, but I'm not going to be asking for any funds in any way, so... I just want to mark that 2015 is the fiftieth anniversary of the beginning of the Vietnam War. It's also the fortieth anniversary of the end of that war. So across the country, different communities are marking the event with newspaper articles, ceremonies, whether it's for the beginning of the war or the end of the war. Maybe some of you seen my article. It was in the Yukaya Daily Journal on Sunday. It was also in the Willets News. And I forgot to mention in that article, if you did see it, there is another Vietnam War veteran who was killed that I didn't mention, and that was Diane Ford's brother, Mike. So there are four from Willets. Covelo lost two, and Fort Bragg lost two. Mendocino won. Comanche won. Redwood Valley, two, and Yukaya lost six. So there was eighteen altogether. And so what I'm asking the city council to do is support three initiatives for this year to mark this, mark this event. And the first would be Memorial Day is a proclamation, and I have prepared a draft. I don't know how you usually do this, but I have a draft ready to get you, get the thing going and maybe consider it in a future meeting.
Hand it to Kathy and she can help wordsmith it if it needs it.
It, it has the three initiatives on there. Of course, the first being a proclamation for Memorial Day. The second would be on the Fourth of July, we're having a display in the museum. We'll have the pictures of all eighteen. The third thing is on Veterans Day. I would like to get support for a polished black granite memorial down by the museum. It's going to be paid for. We'll, we'll donate it. We just need the land where we want to put it, in an appropriate place. And I talked to Allison at the museum. She's agreeable to just outside the front and to the right would be an appropriate place for it, just off the sidewalk a ways. And it would be like a five-black panel granite, similar to the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC. So, and the names would be grouped by hometown. So that's the proposal for you to consider, and I think if we did this, it would be a fitting tribute to our fallen veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll see to it that that proclamation comes back. Our second meeting this month, which is the Fourth Wednesday, whichever date escapes me right now, but be happy to support that any way we can.
Thank you, Bruce, for that. I think that that, I think it's really nice that you're taking this on. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other public matters this evening? Items not on the agenda that anybody wishes to address? Seeing none. We're going to move on to our public communications. Now we move on to public matters, and the first item of business this evening is a presentation of the Willets Police Department's mission statement. I think we have Mr. Anderson here to address this preliminarily, anyway. How you doing, John?
Good, thank you. So, thank you for your time, members of the council and, and the community. My name's John Anderson. I'm a sergeant with the police department, and Chief Gonzalez asked me to come in and speak on his behalf. He was taken away, not taken away during Peace Hall First Memorial Week. He was unavailable and asked me to come work on this. And essentially, I've been with the department for eighteen years, and the time that I've been here, we haven't had a mission statement. We've had a motto, and a lot of you might recognize that on our car, says "For the People." And we have some plaques around that describe some of the, how that was presented, and that was put together by Sergeant Miller back in the nineties. But nevertheless, in, in recent years, especially in 2013 and 14, our department went, we're kind of always going a little bit of a refreshing phase, to put it politely, but we lost some real senior members in our department to retirement, and started kind of realizing it was time for us to take a different direction. So some of us became more senior at that point, namely Chief Gonzalez, Sergeant Donahue and myself in particular, started really making some efforts towards, moving towards a new direction. During that time, Sergeant Donahue and I were sent to a leadership, a six-month leadership seminar that was put on by a group called On Base Leadership and led by Ed Smith, who's a thirty-three-year veteran of law enforcement out of the central California area, and Patrick Williams, who's currently the chief of police in Tattaluma. During that, Sergeant Donahue and I really started, Donahue and I started to really recognize the importance of a mission statement from a leadership principle, if nothing else. Essentially, for lack of a better way of putting it, it's just an idea that when you come to work, or when the community or anybody that's utilizing the resources that you offer, you want to know that the standard is what it is that you do. So when you're, you're in a little bit of a conundrum on how to, how to go, go about something, or what your department stands for, or really what your objective is that day, you look back at it and you say, "Well, this is, this is what my mission is. This is what we represent." So what we did was, we went to the chief and told him how important we thought it was to get this, to start continuing on a good direction for the department, and coincidentally, he was working with a federal community-oriented policing grant, and one of the expectations of that grant was that the department adopt or refine a mission statement. That was literally a coincidence. So using some asset seizure funds, we basically wanted to show that this was something we wanted the entire department and community to buy into, so, and we didn't want to take it, take it on haphazardly. So we enlisted Ed and Pat from, from On Base Leadership and their consulting firm to come in and give a couple of workshops. There was two workshops with members of the department, and then additionally, we had a workshop that included people from the community that admittedly, we kind of, we, we did him select them, but at the same time, we tried to put them across a variety of aspects of society. We didn't just take prepared props and firefighters, so... Essentially, they came in also for one day of the workshop, and I'm not going to bore you, I appreciate the time you've given us of this attention anyways, but it was a, a bit of a process that actually went over a couple of months. People put together small ideas, and essentially, we meshed all those together with the ideas of the department, and we tried to focus on the community, history, culture, and expectations, both of the department members and from the community. We wanted to extend our thanks to John Tomlin, the Little Lake Fire Department, Lynn Kennedy from the Chamber of Commerce, Jim Merrill from Willets Community Services, Alan Nonnaman from the Willets Senior Center, Bill Barksdale, a local realtor, Jeff Ritzy, the principal over at the high school, Rosemary Landry, a local pastor for Methodist Church, and for Linda Williams, who's with our media here in Willets. They were in there and gave a lot of their input. Ultimately, it was pared down into a group of five different ones, and then voted on a little bit more, and ultimately, we came up with what we felt was a good mission statement for the Willets Police Department. So the Willets Police Department's mission is to deliver quality services and resources while providing safety, assistance, and protection built on trusting and reliable relationships. I could sit and break that down and tell you what each of those means to me and to the groups I work with, but that, that's for me to try and show, and the guys that work for me, to try and show when we come out, and I'll kind of let you think about what it means to you, or as much as you want to. So anyways, that's something that we felt like, you know, a lot of times, the, the community and, and other agencies or anybody, you start to lose track of, of what's going on in, in the inner workings of a department and whatnot. I know that we tend to be very in the public eye, but straddled by a little bit of mystique and whatnot, and this is an effort to be a little bit more transparent to the community that we serve. And so, you know, we, we adopted this, and we wanted to share it with, of course, the council and administration and the community in the best way that we could. So I appreciate your time, and I imagine if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to field them.
Yes?
I don't have a question, but I was just going to mention that the other day, it was the first Outgrow Farmers Market, and a couple of the guys came by and, and did a walkthrough, which was really nice to see our officers out there interacting with folks. There's a lot of families that go out there, and a lot of people have their dogs running around and things like that, so it was really nice to have them stop by and say hi.
Well, thank you. It's good feedback. Thanks.
John, I, this is, you know, I'm sure everybody's aware that things around the country are kind of dicey with police departments in different locations. We see it on the news all the time. I'm happy to see this mission statement, and I'm even happier to have witnessed and observed in the time that I've been here how our police department operates. I'm very proud of you guys. I mean, you're very professional, you're calm. I would be extremely surprised if we ever had any kind of issues here that we see in other cities around the country. So I want to thank you and your, I guess your guys for being who you are. Well, thank you.
So there's a couple other little aspects of this. One is a proclamation I want to read in a second, but a couple weeks ago, they had a, and I believe it was a twentieth memorial for Bob Davis. It could have been the fifteenth.
Twentieth.
It was the twentieth. And, and Bob Davis was a Mendocino County Sheriff's Deputy that was killed in the line of duty here in our, in our county. And then, so they commemorate that, and there's a plaque out here right in front of the police department, if people haven't seen that. But, but when that event happened twenty years ago, I was sitting right here, or when it was, became public, and, and we had a little moment here of recognizing that sacrifice and that dedication that you guys have, and the mandate that you kind of run after bullets while we run away from bullets. And, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the members of the Willets Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the community and all its citizens, who enjoy and value the city as a place to live, work, and visit, whereas it is important that our citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement professionals. Whereas it is important that our law enforcement employees recognize their duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, by maintaining order, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Willets Police Department unceasingly, unceasingly provide a vital public service, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Now therefore, I, Bruce Burton, mayor of the city of Willets, along with my fellow council members, do hereby call upon the residents of the city of Willets to observe National Police Week during the month of May, and to join in commemorating all law enforcement officers and employees, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have earned for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I'd like to present this to John. Since I'm happy to scream. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Well, certainly, on behalf of the chief of police and the men and women of the department, thank you for your recognition and for the, some of the extra thought that you put into that. It doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it, and thank you for the chance to work for the community and with you, too. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll go on to the, some of the other business of the evening. Our next item under public matters is a notice public hearing regarding issuance of tax-exempt obligations by the city of Willets for the purposes of financing facilities for the benefit of Frank Howard Foundation and/or selected and/or related or successor entity. Adrian, you want to introduce this?
Sure.
Actually, before we do that, I, I've consulted with our attorney and with another attorney. I, just to put it on notice, I am on the board of the Adventist Health Hospital, a separate entity of the Howard Foundation. It's a completely charitable board that I sit on. I get no pay. I get no benefit, one way or another. I hope to get it, to use a hospital like anybody else someday, at some day in the future, but, but I plan on, on participating in this discussion, because I don't believe I have any financial conflict of interest in this issue, but I just wanted to make the public aware that I sit on the Adventist Board, so... Adrian, can you go ahead with that?
Sure. So the city was approached a couple of months ago by Arnie Mello at Tri-County's Bank, and Arnie wasn't able to be here tonight, about our openness to serving as a conduit in this financing package, so that the foundation could receive tax-exempt financing, which is obviously more favorable. So Suzie and I have engaged in a number of conference calls with all of the stakeholders in this process. Tonight, we have from the foundation, Marjorie Hanley here. We have our bond counsel from Jones Hall, Scott Ferguson. Dan Bronfman is here from Growth Capital. And, see, I'm looking if I see anyone else here. So we have the players here tonight to give you the detail, but essentially, the city is being asked to approve, well, conduct a public hearing tonight, and then approve the issuance of these tax-exempt obligations. And in your agenda packet, we have a number of documents that go along with this, and there's the installment sale agreement, the installment purchase agreement, the trust agreement, and certificate purchase agreement. There are a whole slew of other documents that are related to this that will come to play at different points in the process, but I think at this point, I'd like to have Scott Ferguson come up and give you his opinion on the city's position in this.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Scott Ferguson with Jones Hall. We're your bond counsel for this financing. Actually, technically, we're, we've served as bond counsel to the city in the past. For this financing, we're your issuer's counsel. It's a minor distinction, but I thought I should make it. So the, the way this financing works economically, it's, it's a loan from the foundation, as Adrian said, to, to the foundation by a local bank, but because of the complexities of California law allowing, under which cities can borrow money and issue obligations, we need to go through the, the process of this installment sale and saleback resulting in the issuance of these certificates of participation. The cities, it's a true conduit financing, where the city plays a role at the outset as the issuer of the, of the certificates, in order for the, for the certificates to be tax-exempt, as was said, which allows for a lower interest rate. The bank was willing to pay a lower interest rate because the interest is, is tax-exempt from the, from the bank's perspective, but the, all the flow of funds during the course of the loan, everything is assigned through this trust agreement to the trustee for the bonds, which is US Bank, which then transfers everything, the payments as they come in to, to the bank that's funding the loan, the local bank. So the cities, and the city has no lingering obligations on, on the debt, no moral obligation if there were ever a default. And we're, we're here to look at the documents, and we've reviewed them carefully to be sure that all the safeguards are in place, to make this a true conduit financing from the city's perspective.
Do we have any questions from the council here before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I have some.
Fine.
It was some fascinating reading. I, I did read everything, and strangely enough, I understood it all, but it still raised certain questions. And just for the record, I like the whole concept, I like the whole idea of being able to help the hospital, but putting on my public servant hat, you know, I have to ask some questions. The first one that I have is, the, the statement was, "The certificates of participation are not to exceed five and a half million dollars." But in the, the agenda summary, it states that the city may issue no more than an additional four and a half million of tax-exempt obligation during 2015. Does this have, present a conflict of some sort?
It's not a conflict. It's because one of the other benefits that, that the foundation has asked is if we could designate these what's called "bank qualified," which provides, since, since the ultimate lender is a bank, there's a additional benefit that the bank will get if the city designates the certificates as what's called "bank qualified." It's a specific provision in the Internal Revenue Code. What that means is, the city needs to be a small issuer this year, this calendar year, 2015, and the IRS defines a small issuer as an issuer of no more than ten million dollars in tax-exempt obligations during the calendar year, so...
Okay, so the four and a half million dollars that a...
That's the balance of what would be available to us.
Over the 5.5. Okay. Over the 5.5.
Through this calendar year.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that part. All right, good, thank you. The other thing is, I've never heard of a certificate of participation. Could you, I mean, I, I read the description of what it was. I'm not clear exactly what it is.
It, it's an alternative form of debt where the issuance of bonds or signing a loan is unavailable. And as a city, as a city in California, there are a lot of limitations on the ability of the city of its own accord to issue something called a, a bond. So a certificate of participation is a way in California that's been used since the eighties to incur obligations that kind of have the look and feel of a loan or of a bond, but have a different structure and legally are, it's something that the, the city can enter into.
And these, I assume, are sold or, I guess, bought and sold? They, they are, under limited conditions?
Yes.
Almost like a stock certificate or a bond or some other?
It's, it's very much like a bond. We do financings where certificates of participation are sold to the public, to investors, and where, in this particular case, the whole, probably will be one certificate of participation, and the whole thing will be purchased by the bank, the way the bank would purchase a municipal bond.
So, so the other thing is, and, and this is going to get a little squirrely, so I hope nobody misconstrues what I'm asking here, but the way I read it, the way you described it, is that two things are going to happen on the same day. The city buys the property from the foundation, and then, like thirty seconds later or simultaneously, the city sells the property back to the foundation. And this is done in order to create the certificates as tax-exempt.
It's in order to create the, the stream of payments.
Right.
So the purchase payments will be coming from the foundation twice a year, four times a year, whatever it is. On paper, they come to the, to the city, but under the documents, the city assigns all rights to those payments to the, to the trustee under the documents, US Bank.
But there's something about it that tickles the back of my mind, that says, it sounds, I know it's legal. I mean, don't, I don't even want to go there, but I mean, it sounds as if we're doing all of this to avoid paying taxes, and I'm sure there are some entities in the country that don't appreciate that. I mean, so how does that, how does that work?
Well, the, the, the fact that it's the city on the obligation that the interest can be tax-exempt under the IRS rules and regs, and doing it for a foundation as a 501(c)(3) is permit, is permitted, excuse me, but the 501(c)(3) itself isn't allowed to issue debt.
We keep the room warm to get people to talk.
So, in, in order to take advantage of the tax exemption that's built into the IRS regs and, and the law, the city has to be the issuer of the debt.
And the IRS actually wrote this thing that permits?
Yes.
I mean, that, that's the weird thing, get my head wrapped around, but I'm happy it's there. Trust me, this is great. Okay, the other, there's another one, and this is, you know, just sort of asking, I got to tell you, I got into this, this thing, and I, I was really zoning in on it. The certificate shall bear interest at a cost not to exceed 12%. I assume the interest rate is lower than that. That's just the ceiling.
Exactly, and 12% is the maximum allowed per law, so that's kind of a placeholder, not knowing, and because it's not the city's debt, it was less important for us to zero in on, on a maximum rate, so the way that the resolution was written is that it would be just the maximum permitted by law, which happens to be 12%.
And I thought I noticed somewhere in the documents that it was actually going to be starting at like three and a half or something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, where, where the bank is with, with the rate, but that sounds right.
Okay. Well, this has been very educational. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would that, would, would any sort of a default in this affect the city's bond rating in the future?
It, it will, it will not, because it, any rating agency would look at this and recognize that it's a conduit financing, it's not a... it's a conduit financing. It's not a city obligation, so it would not have an effect on the city's bond rating.
Do you have any other questions up here?
I actually had to draw a map for myself, because I'm kind of a visual person. So, trying to visualize the transfers. So, this really is just a straight conduit, also in the sense that there is not a benefit from, for the city, you know, like we're not gaining interest income or anything like that. It's just doing our part in the community.
Correct. The city's not a lender.
Right.
Not loaning its own funds or any, or there's not even a, there's no interest accruing year by year.
Right. So, the only real impact to us is on our bill, our...
Ceiling.
Yeah, remaining.
Able to...
Right, the $4.5 million.
Right.
And which is through the end.
Which we're not planning on.
We're not planning, we, you know, evaluated that and didn't foresee any need for that. Now, that's not to say if a need arose that we couldn't borrow more than that, but it would be on a taxable basis, not tax exempt. But that limitation is just through the end of this calendar year. Then it gets lifted.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, the, one question I had about that, you know, it's sort of like magic that we can obligate or, you know, stand behind this 5.5 million and have no risk at all and all that. It just kind of, I think like Ron was saying, it makes you kind of go, hmm, is there a catch? But apparently not. But I've noticed in the resolution, section six, it says, "The execution and delivery of not to exceed 5.5 million," and representing, proportioned undivided interest, anyway, it says payable by the city pursuant to the agreement. So, that was the one thing that made me, like, what do we have to pay?
So, payable by the city, but the documents, and it's in the recitals on the first page, those payments are only payable from the payments that the city's receiving from the foundation.
Okay.
So, it's a one-to-one match.
So, if we don't receive, we don't pay.
Exactly, exactly.
And we don't have any obligation to do so.
Correct. It's a special limited obligation is the term of art that's used in the document.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Please.
I would like to recommend the recommended action. I would like to have that as a motion, please.
I think we're going to do a public hearing, then we'll come back.
I still have my...
We'll give you the chance to make that.
Thank you.
Does, will the city be able to recover any of its servicing costs out of this?
There's, all the costs of the city to do the transaction are being paid by the foundation as part of the borrowing. And then there's an annual fee that I think is intended to make the city whole for any administrative costs, if any, are needed over the course of the financing while they're still outstanding.
Yeah, I, are you going to talk about the sales agreements, or is somebody else going to?
I could talk about them or answer questions about them.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the first, apparently, there's two sales agreements, one from the city to the corporation, the foundation, the other back again. So, I'm looking at the first one that's in the packet that is from the city selling to the corporation. That's what I, yeah, because it's, the corporation proposed to provide the construction. Site is owned by the corporation where, well, anyway, the way I read it down, this one is from the city selling to the corporation. But as I go through it, as, the second wherethes, the second page of wherethes, it talks about the purchase price for the property to be paid by the city at installments. I thought this one should have been worded "to" the city, because the next one talks about the obligation of the corporation to the city. They're not labeled which is for what. Yeah, okay, here's another one, the second one here in the packet that's entitled, "Installment Purchase Agreement Between Frank Howard Foundation as Seller and City of Willets as Purchaser." And this first one doesn't have a title like that, but when you read through it, it indicates that the city is the seller. So, I guess all I'm saying is, is that the wording inside the body of it seems to indicate otherwise.
Okay. Well, I'll take a look to make sure that the wording is correct for each.
Are we ready to open the public hearing? I'd like to open the public hearing. Somebody didn't trust me to do this correctly.
I'll look at the others first.
No, I've already lost it. I can lose people. Oh, it's right in front of me.
The glasses are on your head.
Anyway, I'm opening the public hearing on this participation with Howard Foundation on this funding. Do we have anybody in the public like to address this item? Second, third, and last call. I'm going to close the public hearing. Did we get any written comments?
We did not.
So, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would now entertain a motion or any further questions from the council.
I would still move that the recommended action is the one we accept.
Polly's got the second. Larry made the motion. Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Magdalio?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, you still got to get it done by October 28. Boy, you got your work cut out for you.
I'd like to publicly thank Adrian and Susie, because they've spent a lot of time on this the last month. We've had a lot of conference calls and a lot of meetings. So, I really thank you for all your time, and certainly thank you for your vote. You've always been very supportive of what we do, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, Margie. You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we would not feel, we're used to people getting up and leaving.
At least wait at this in decent period.
No, that's all right. We'll give them just a second.
Adrian, is this open still?
Huh?
Oh, we can close it. You can turn it off, Holly. Is it going on?
Agenda.
At the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Up. There you go. Is this a gate? I didn't believe it was like... No, over, all the way over.
We're going to watch Wednesday night sitcoms.
Yeah, my way we watch the night.
Okay.
Did we add this?
Yes.
Oh, you're very astute. Yes, we do need to do that. And we're supposed to do that a little bit ago.
Will I make a motion that we add this?
We have a, need to add, tell me again what we need to add here.
It's a letter of support, in support of a grant application that MTA is submitting for Federal Transportation Administration inner-city bus program. And they've asked the city for a letter of support for their application. I overlooked getting it on the agenda, so I'm asking that we amend the agenda tonight to include that.
I'll move you amend the agenda to include the letter of support. Is that going to go on the?
It's going on the consent.
On the consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Can we have a roll call vote on?
Yes. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Magdalio?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Sure. Okay. So, anyway, now we'll move on. Thank you for reminding me. It went right past. We've got, back on our agenda is our discussion of possible action of franchise agreement, transfer station agreement with Solid Waste of Willets. And then we sent that back to staff to try and bring back a consolidated document with incorporating the council's direction. And how did we do?
I think we're about there. In the last 10 days or so, there's been much back and forth between myself and Emma Jones and Jerry on some of the language. I think that we are now at the point where we have a more refined agreement in principle, and it's about at the point, I think, that we're comfortable, staff is comfortable recommending the execution of this. Since it was only, it only got to the point that we're at about 36 hours ago, there hasn't been much opportunity for the council members, and certainly not the public, to review it. And so, I believe Adrian and I are requesting that you don't approve the execution of this agreement tonight, but that we put this on your next council agenda. Also, it's, it would be premature, in my view, to be approving this franchise agreement until such time as there has been a agreement between the franchisee and the composter. But I understand, as of an email I received yesterday, that Mr. Millett has made some very minor suggested changes to a contract prepared by Solid Waste of Willets. So, it looks like, and I haven't talked to Martin or to Jerry, but I'm assuming that they are very close. Okay, about an inch, I guess. So, we can talk about some of these details if you wish, but my recommendation is that we pass this to your next meeting, and hopefully by then, there will be consensus on the composting agreement as well as the franchisee agreement.
I'm seeing nods of heads that are okay with that?
Yeah. Can I just add a couple things that, I agree with what Jen just said, but to me, it's important that the, that there be an agreement in place for the composting, which is a new, you know, a new feature, so that we know that that will happen and that that's part of our approval of the agreement. So, I think that's important. If the next two weeks, if that's nailed down, that would be really great. There are a couple of pretty minor things in the franchise agreement with Solid Waste that are just slightly different than the direction that the council gave back in March that I just think we should be aware of. The motion that was made back in March was that there would be a total 5% reduction in rates. That would be the combination of foregoing, the cost of living increase this year, and then a 3.3 roughly percent decrease in January 2016. And the ad hoc committee working with SWAL representatives felt that we were close enough by having a second year of non, no cost of living increase, combined with some of the additional benefits that the city is getting that weren't in the previous contract, like not having to pay tipping fees for the city's service. So, but I think that is an important thing just to know, for the council members to realize that that's a slight difference from what was directed by the council itself. I also personally was hoping and felt that it would be appropriate to have weekly pickup of all three bins, so it would include the recycling that is not incorporated in here. The recycling would just be every two weeks as it has been, and the weekly pickup would be only the green bins and the garbage. So, I just want to call those to everyone's attention.
I was personally aware of your desire on that point, but I discussed it with Adrian, and my understanding was that the consensus of the council was consistent with what is being proposed, that recycling was every other week. If I'm mistaken about that.
It wasn't, that wasn't explicit in the motion that was made on March 20th, the date that it was made. So, but, you know, it was just sort of left implicit or not, you know. And so, but I do understand that that seems to be the consensus of the council. I just want to put that out there.
I believe Mr. Ward made it clear to me that he did not agree to that, and that, anyway.
Well, in fact, during the several months of negotiations, we did discuss briefly the possibility of weekly pickup for recyclables, but it was never adopted as a policy, and it was never presented to the council or discussed. It was specifically not discussed, actually. So, that's why it was felt that it should be in the agreement the way you have it in the agreement.
And also, I just wanted to add that I think the consensus of the council also was the importance of not raising the rate and having us freeze on the cost of living for at least the two years. That was worth, you know, foregoing an increase in service on the recycling being picked up. So, I'm...
Can I clarify? Can I clarify that in this document, this is the newest copy that we received, the November 1st, 2015 draft? So, the changes in green, those are in the document, correct? I mean, those are staying?
Yes. The changes that are in green reflect changes made by Mr. Sweeney.
But if it says like deleted, that has happened, and the language that remains is what, is?
Correct.
Remain, okay.
Correct.
Thank you, that's...
I don't know if computers make this better or worse.
Well, I just want to note that we did have some staff who this morning with how the document was printing out and how it looked on different computer screens. And so, you guys have the, it says the newest copy that was distributed today.
It reads a little easier than the other ones.
Yeah.
I would, go ahead, Larry.
Is there anything in here about reviewing it over the period of time of the contract every so many years? Because we're talking, could be a whole new or maybe two or three different councils in the amount of time that this agreement is on. And I just think that there ought to be something in here so that they can review it, or we can review it, you know, at several periods of time during the 25 years or 15 years, whatever it's decided on. Just to give them, you know, that much amount of time without, you know, any kind of review or a, and I don't know what, just kind of a button that it's time to review it and then actually make a motion to actually review it in a time, because that's a, that's a great amount of time that the councils in the future are burdened with in case it doesn't go correctly.
Well, I think what there, you know, so, help me out here. You know, there is the requirement that the contractor notify the city three years in advance that the contract is going to expire. So, they have an obligation to notify us so that we can notify them. That's 12 years down the road. And as I understand it, the cost of living adjustments go on quietly, you know. I mean, they're not, they're not brought to the council. If they come back for any, you know, extra adjustments like they, like they did in the previous 15 years with the fuel spikes and the, some change in the tipping fee or something like that, that would obviously bring it to the council's attention. But I don't know of any other thing that would awaken the council to that.
The thing that bothers me is when we okayed the fuel spikes, there was never anything that signaled that the fuel had gone down. And, you know, for the council to say, you know, fuels are not at the same price that they were, and so do we get an adjustment on the rates or whatever? I mean, just to say that for 15 to 25 years, that this is going to be an operation without anybody looking at it, is, I don't think the right motion to give to the committee, and especially to the other council members that are going to be coming up. I hope I'm around in 25 years, but I, you know, the chances of me being around in 25 years is pretty nil, essentially. So, I just think that, that you're just making it tougher on the people that are coming onto the council. That's the best I can say, I guess.
You know, I appreciate that, and I think that there is some merit to it. I also think that there's... also think that there's, it's a, you know, in that it, we've been working on this darn near year, and where, where there isn't actually a re-opener, if there, if there isn't something being, being brought up to, that is in conflict with the contract, and some, I don't know what, you know, you could have this academic discussion about it. This is what it is, and this is where, how things are going, but as long as everybody's obeying the contract, I'm not sure what you would do other than, than, than to review it. But I, I do have one other comment, but go ahead and...
Well, yeah, I was going to say, one, one of the factors is that there now is a separate fuel pricing adjustment, and that gets built in. If the price of fuel goes down, so does the rate. But it gets, you know, balanced with maybe the cost of living went up, the cost of fuel went down, you know. So that gets actually factored in separately. So that will, that will be adjusted annually. The other reason for a long-term contract is for predictability and loans for capital improvements for our provider, our franchisee. So that is not an unusual situation, and they need predictability. If we had a discretionary option every five years to open the whole thing up again, they wouldn't have that predictability, and they couldn't commit a long-term, you know, investments that they need to make to do this over. So it's not going to be twenty-five without a review. It would be, you know, maybe the first fifteen, but with an ability, as we have done this time, to open it back up. At the end of twelve, or thirteen, or fourteen years, we go, the requirements are changing, or, you know, or the council's designers are changing. So I think those are, you know, it's the best that we can do, is that we do need to give the franchisee that kind of commitment in order to have them do the service that they're doing for us.
I just, you know, my, my final thought on this, back to where I was, but I'll see if there's any support up here to do it, so I don't put everybody through an exercise that will go nowhere. But, but, you know, I'm, I'm real rate sensitive, this, and I am not the avid advocate of, I guess I can, of real progressive recycling things to the sacrifice of rate. We have lined landfills, you know, we've done a lot of, everybody spent a lot of money to, to get where we are. But, but, so, I mean, my point, question is, is would there be any support up here from the council to have Jerry come back with an alternate rate, which would be the same service that we have now going into the future?
Without the mixed organics?
Right. And running his own, his own business in his compost business. As I understand it, there is not, we're not under state law, we're under state law to meet a diversion rate, but there is not a state law that says that we have residential food waste recycling. That is, that is an enhancement that we are asking from our hauler to provide our community. And I'm not convinced that it's going to be a tremendous diversion factor, number one. And number two, I think, I'd like to know what the rate impact of it is. I'd like to know if that fifteen-dollar cart goes to nine dollars, or, you know, I, I just don't know why we wouldn't want to know what the rate impact of having the basic legal service that we're obligated to provide versus having an enhanced service that, that some people feel is a priority. I'm not sure that the, all the ratepayers in the community feel that, that they want that enhanced service. And I feel like we have an obligation to at least, we have to justify it. If we don't know what the number is, then we just are making this decision blindly. And if, you know, if it's only, you know, and it's, I just wonder if there's any support up here, that anybody that wants to know that number besides me.
Can I address that? I, the way the, the agreement is written is, is sort of, what's the term, self-controlling. You very well might be right that this whole organic waste project, you know, may have like very few takers. So under, there's a couple scenarios that are going to play out into the future. One of them, of course, would involve the agreement that Solid Waste is making with Cold Creek. And what has been declared is that Cold Creek, unless it's changed, but the last information that I had, Cold Creek was going to charge a tipping fee of twenty-one dollars a ton. And Solid Waste has told us that they will absorb twenty-one dollars a ton. We've also been told that, in the existing rate, we've also been told that after two years, that tipping fee will go up to twenty-six dollars a ton. And we've, again, been told by Solid Waste that they would pass through the difference between twenty-one and the twenty-six dollars to the ratepayers. But it's going to be self-controlling, because if...
No, it's not self-controlling at all.
Well, it is, because if people, if, as you say, and, you know, I, I tend to agree with you that this is what's going to work out. If nobody uses the service, or very few people use the service, and the tonnage that goes to Cold Creek will be very low, which means that the tipping fees will be very low, and the impact on the rates will be very low.
No, that's not true. Because, because the tipping fee at Cold Creek is going to be twenty-one dollars, where I believe we're being charged fifteen or sixteen dollars now to take it to his own. And, and Jerry has to close down his operation and send everything there, then, yeah, maybe it's going to be, maybe if it, you know, it's a minor. But, but that's just part of the cost. Ron, what I'm asking the council, if they're interested in, in having the service that they have right now continued into the, into the future, unless there is some reason that would, has to be readdressed because of new regulatory requirements. And, and we have what we, you know, we've negotiated a rate now that has this enhanced service, and I am asking if there's interest here to, to now have Jerry provide us with a rate that is independent. And I don't know what the downside is. And the rest of that's just, to me, it's...
Well, I just wanted to, the second part of your question that I was going to address is the fact that the way the, the, this agreement with Solid Waste has been structured, there is no specific mention, or there's specifically no specific mention of who the solid, the, the mixed organics are sent to. Part of that is the feeling that, and, and we've had this in discussion, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn here, that it's been indicated that there is this plan for Solid Waste and others in the county to develop or enhance their own composting operation. And the wording of the agreement allows that to happen, that the material will be sent to whoever Solid Waste sends it to. And that's, that's going to be their choice. And if it turns out that they develop their own composting operation, and they can provide that service for the same cost, then...
You're missing, you're still missing the point, but that, I, I think...
Addressing your point, I'm not interested in that specifically, because I believe that this is moving waste forward. You know, we were, I believe Willetts was one of the first agencies to do single stream, all the...
North of the Golden Gate.
Okay, north of the Golden Gate, we were the first ones to do single-stream recycling, which increases the amount of people that are actually recycling. I mean, I've been to the places where you have to separate out all the different recycling things into the four different bins that you have, you know, the little crates that you have by your house.
Oh, you should have that here.
Yeah. And we moved it forward. And so I believe that this is moving forward. It's not mandated yet, but it, I think it will likely be in the future. So I appreciate that the work that the ad hoc committee has done on this and, and staff, and I know it's taken longer than we would have liked, but I want to get this over the finish line. And I think by having the mixed organics, and it's not just for me, although I am looking forward to using it personally, I am. I have heard others in the community that specifically have asked, why isn't the city doing this yet? What's going on? And so I've mentioned that, you know what, the contract is coming up for renewal. We'll put that out there. And, and I believe that there's community support for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with what Holly just said. I also think this is important.
To the exclusion of even knowing what the alternative cost is.
Well, it would be, if we had put that out a year ago, maybe we could have, you know, at least done that. But I don't, we want to come back with a contract in a couple weeks, so I think it's a little unrealistic to try to do it now. And I think it's important that we include the mixed organics. I think it's, it's the wave of the future, if it's not even required yet, it will be probably very soon. But, but the other thing about rate reduction is that with that mixed organics option, some people can reduce their own bill by going from a thirty-five gallon down to a, whatever the next one down, twenty-gallon. So individual households that, that use this, you know, take advantage of this, can reduce their personal bill. And at the same time, I think it's going to be a real big advantage for the commercial operations that have a lot of, of mixed organics. And I think that's where the bigger quantity is going to come into play. So, anyway, I, I don't want to reopen that at this point.
I, I, I think you're, you know, I think you're not doing the job, but I think that's a responsibility you have as a policymaker to, to have something to compare to. You've got, you're just, you're just ordering a Cadillac, and you're having the dealer tell you the price. And I, I think that that's an incomplete policy decision. But, but I respect the fact, if there's three people here that say that, it isn't going to do me any good to ask that to be done, because it won't go anywhere. But, but I, I think it's a mistake. I think it's, I think it's a...
Well, I personally would like to read this. I mean, it's, it's pretty, you know, it's lengthy part, but, you know, just to...
Well, I think staff has done a best job to get it here, and we understand that we still have to read it. But, but we know what the components of it are.
Well, until I read it and, read it several times, you know, then maybe I can enter into more of a discussion. But right now, I'm just, you know, I just got this paper.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess that is, once again, we bring these gentlemen in and out, but I think you knew where it was going tonight. I think that discussion was pretty clear. And it seems clear that, that the direction that is, we're going is the direction the council wants to proceed, so. Yes, please. Jerry Ward, Solid Waste Willetts. It has been a year, and hopefully we can get it put to rest. Larry, you will hopefully read it, but you need to read. Well, first of all, it is fifteen years, and it's a long time, I understand that. In fact, I've been through three Strandskis in that fifteen years on the council. But there is section fifteen, it describes rate decreases, that the city could implement if they so wish. If the rates get out of, out of joint, you can actually implement some kind of an audit, or, or request some kind of a review of our financials and make a determination. So that's in section fifteen when you get to it. Regarding the, the rate freeze for two years, we are in, we are still under the existing contract until October 31st, and we've, to show our good faith, we have froze the rates this year, even though we didn't have to do that. We could have just started it November 1st, when the new contract went into effect. So we're just showing our good faith that we're going to freeze it, and we'll continue to freeze it for the, for the following year as well. And with regard to, you know, the mixed organic waste, it is in the contract, and unfortunately, we will have to shut down our facility. But if there isn't the three, three council members that want to look at that rate, that's fine, too. But if you change your mind, we can certainly provide that information in the future. Or if things do change in the future, this is a long-term thing. I've seen a lot of change in fifteen years in how garbage has been picked up and processed. So we, we've always been on the forefront of a company that always likes to change, too. So if things do change, Larry, you're gone, and as a new council, we'll, we'll work with a new council to, to divert as much as we can, especially if it is a state law. But we've been very progressive the last fifteen years to divert a number of things, and I'm not here to name them all tonight, but we've done a lot in the last fifteen years, and we'll continue to do so in the next fifteen. And I hope I'm still here, too. So thanks.
Thanks. Martin, did, did you care to make any comments this evening?
Rob, would you, are you going to lower the last blind?
Yeah, actually the...
Yes.
For me, it's the next one or two.
Unless you want a blind, council.
Good evening.
I see your face, but I knew you were there.
I am here.
Mike Sweeney, Mendocino, Solid Waste Management Authority.
One more.
First of all, Bruce, I'd like to make a comment that the best way to explore all the alternatives would, of course, been to put the entire contract out for competitive bid. But there were good reasons not to do that, I suppose, so that's what, one of the things that got us where we are with the information we have today. There is a conflict in the proposed contract with city code, which I want to point out to you. The current city code mandates in section eight point zero, eight point zero, seven, zero, that there is mandatory collection. Every owner of an occupied dwelling shall pay the contractor a rate for minimum solid waste service. And that's contradicted by the language which has been written to the proposed contract at section six, C1, which states that the use of the Ganty's curbside collection services described herein are not mandated by the city. So that should be reconciled, one way or the other. You should amend the city code, or you should take that provision out of the proposed agreement.
It is my intention that we would be amending the city code.
On the question of weekly recyclables pickup, I would like to make the point once more, that I believe it is a major convenience for the public to have the carts all go out on the same day each week. And it is also, without question, an increasing diversion measure, a measure that increases the diversion, because it avoids a situation where people find they have a full recycling bin and no place else to put their recyclables. And I think the importance of this benefit to your citizens is shown by what other municipalities have done. Ukiah has recyclables every week, Fort Bragg, Point Arena, the unincorporated area of Potter Valley, the unincorporated area of Redwood Valley, and of course, countless numbers of other municipalities around the state and the nation. So, again, this contract is still on the table. You have the ultimate say as to what you put in or don't put in. And I think I can say with confidence that this is not a deal-breaker issue from the point of view of your franchised hauler, because the overall benefits of this deal to Solid Waste of Willetts are substantial. And I don't think that this would spoil the deal. Now, on the mixed organics program, I want to emphasize that I agree very much with your city attorney and with council member Strong, that I think it's imperative that you see an agreement for a composting destination before you approve a contract that is based on the assumption that you have a mixed organic program. Until there is that destination, until that is, that's settled, you don't know that. I think it's only prudent to do that. And I hope, I share your disappointment that it hasn't been taken care of yet, and I hope that you will not be held up much longer. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we're ready to move on? We will get an update on the city's emergency water supply project. Thanks, Jerry. Good to see you, Anna.
Good to see you.
Did I miss C?
Yeah.
Well, that's this transfer station, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the different one of the branch.
It's all one item.
It's all one item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we have new well driller.
We have a new well driller.
Yeah.
Needs me to approve the contract tonight. The Wicks Drilling has agreed to have the well completed by June 30th, which is, which is good. completed by June 30, which is good. We were concerned we weren't going to be able to get somebody since all the well drillers are so busy. But Andrea worked with Dave Bossler from GHD, and we were able to convince a couple of people to give us a price. And Wix is a little bit more, but I think we're more comfortable with their cost based on their timeline.
How big a, somebody's asked me, and I, how big a diameter will we plan to drill?
It's 12 inch, 12 inch diameter.
12 inch.
Is this pretty, it seems like such a huge amount of money. Is this pretty common for what wells take? Or is it partially because of the kind of well we have to drill, like a super safe?
A prevailing wage drill?
It just seems like so much money.
A big part of the cost is the stainless steel casing. So that was one of the changes that came about. And the recommendation, and we, that was a recommendation from GHD, and we reviewed the recommendation, and we scrutinized it, and talked to the city of Ukiah about the wells they drilled back in 2008, 2009. And stainless steel was the preferred alternative. And that's almost 50% of the cost. So that's where the cost comes from, the increase in cost. We would have ended up paying about that, about the same amount, if not a little more, with our previous driller, switching over from PVC to stainless steel. So we're happy, we're ready to move forward and get them out there. We think it's dry enough. As long as we don't get too much rain this weekend, these next few days. Trying to get a drill rig out there as soon as they, as soon as we can schedule them. And we've been working inside and working with PG&E as far as power goes. We've made some considerable progress in that area. The Public Works and Water Department and Sewer Department have been busy with an issue up on Bid and Bender that is kind of stacking our projects up a little bit right now. So, but as soon as we have that resolved, we'll be able to get a couple more people on the groundwater treatment plant project. So moving forward.
Good.
Any questions?
Is the plumbing coming together inside there?
We got parts coming in. We haven't been able to start. We're getting the walls up on the inside before we put the plumbing in. And then we're hoping to get started on that, you know, sometime this week.
Good. Thank you. So you might have water on the 4th of July?
Yes.
In the well?
Yes.
Okay. So we moved to the consent calendar with the added item of the letter of support from the MTA.
I would like the full item B for discussion.
Which one would you say?
B, as in boy.
B, as in boy.
All approved, move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of B.
And I guess we're calling the other item like F or something, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
So I have motion, a second, any public comment on the consent calendar, those items? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madigal?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Sure. So item B is a renewal of our animal shelter.
Yeah, I'm just curious about Article, or paragraph six, payment. I'm not sure I understand how this works out. We have a payment of 19,00947, which I believe carries us through last fiscal year. And then we have an additional 7603, representing payment for principal debt services, SOC. I'm not sure what SOC means for 2014 to 2015.
Share. Share of cost.
Okay. Where do these two numbers come from? I mean, yeah, what are they?
Kathy, did you bring that?
Invoices.
Yeah. So we've had this contract in place for the last number. You did?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. For the last number of years. And there was a schedule that was laid out by the county that we essentially have agreed to. So they calculate what the cost is to provide the service that we're contracting for, and then what our share of cost is for their facility.
Right. Okay, well, maybe I didn't express my wonderment. First of all, what is the annual payment for the service, the contracted payment?
For the service itself?
Yeah, well, for this thing that we're talking about.
It's just under $20,000, 19947.
Okay, so it's the 19947. So what does the, and this is from last fiscal year because for some reason we didn't pay it?
They were delayed in sending us the request for the contract renewal.
Okay. So that brings us up to what, June of 2014?
15. Fiscal year, let's see. Sorry. Shelter services for fiscal year 1415. So through June 30 of this year.
Okay. And the $7,600 share of cost, what is that? I don't think I've ever seen that.
That's for their facility. So they have...
Debt service on it.
So they're building, they have a debt service on it, like we would on, you know, various facilities.
Okay. So the $19,000 is for the service they provide.
Yes.
The other is to help them pay for the building.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So would you make a motion?
I will. I will move to accept item B and consent calendar.
All accepted.
Any other, anybody else want to weigh in on this? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madigal?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, then...
Comment on the warrants?
Sure.
Comment type question. I was noticing in the warrants that we still have, we're still doing a lease for the solar bees. And I didn't know, I think Ron brought this up a little while ago. I didn't know if we were going to relook at that. I think it was supposed to, I think it was a lease purchase agreement. And I would just love to check in, maybe we could invite J.C. to weigh in on it.
I think Rod is the one that you want to check in with on that.
Hey, Rod, I'm bringing up the solar bees. Our payment was in the warrants. That's what brought it to my attention. But I didn't know, are we thinking about discussing that? About whether we want to continue?
I was supposed to meet with the Water Department this week to make a final decision. But it looks like we're going to ask that they take them back. Because we're not, we don't feel like we're getting the, we're not getting the results that were expected. So we have some water quality issues in Morris right now that are proving to be a challenge in respect to treatment. So next meeting, I'll have more. I'll probably have a final recommendation on that one.
So if we do away with the solar bees, then we're just down to bluestone for algae?
Not necessarily. We haven't looked at, we haven't looked at, but we talked about aeration possibilities, some other passive type of activities.
To stir up the water.
Yeah, I guess that's not really passive. But it's not chemical related. If we have to bluestone anyway, because even with the solar bees there, then, you know, we're paying double. So...
Because this could be early year.
Yeah. It stayed really warm over the winter time. So we didn't get the cold, as much cold weather as we typically do. So water didn't get us cold. And so we're going to be faced with algae growth, vegetation growth earlier than is typical. And I don't know, I think we have to look into some reservoir management, especially with respect to Morris Reservoir, because it's getting old. And we just have a lot of decaying tulies and reeds and whatever other type of vegetation is there. And it just, it's not a, not like it used to be where it was clear and you could see the bottom in 10 feet or whatever. So part of the ongoing...
Ongoing challenge.
So you'll bring it back next meeting?
I believe so, yeah.
What you guys decided to do?
Yeah.
Okay. And what the solution that you decided to do?
Correct.
Thank you.
And it will also be included in our budget workshop discussion.
Correct.
Okay. Rights to appeal. Any persons who are dissatisfied, the decision, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. Cities adopted 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which decisions, the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Do we have any city manager reports this evening?
Sure, a couple of things. This morning, Larry and I traveled up to Eureka bright and early to attend a 10:30 meeting of the NCRRA Board, North Coast Railroad Authority, to essentially request in person a letter of support from NCRRA for our Rails with Trails grant application that we're working on. And of course, the project falls entirely within the railroad right of way. So it's actually essential that we have their support on this. So we did get that approval for that letter of support. I expect that I'll have it in hand over the next couple of days. Our grant application that we're working on is due June 1. We have a meeting with Kathy Hopper, who's been writing the grant for us tomorrow afternoon. We're hoping that will be our final review of the grant application. In the next week, we would package it up and send it off to Caltrans. Let's see. They asked us some questions about, you know, was it going to be on the east side of the railroad or the west side? And just so everyone knows, the project is proposed to be on the east side because the west side simply doesn't have enough room to accommodate a trail as well as railroad avenue improvements in the future. And Larry, did you want to say anything else about our meeting this morning?
It was interesting to me, they wanted to make sure that we are going to maintain it. And, which I thought was kind of interesting because why wouldn't we?
Well, why won't they maintain their?
Well, that's what they're questioning. And we assured them that we would do that. And if I have to be out there with the weed worker, I guess I'll have to be out there with the weed worker. Anyhow, so the other thing that I thought was interesting is that I have been concerned about the rail with the trails, about the people that... That are there. And John McCowen said that when Ukiah implemented theirs, and it hasn't been dedicated yet, that it's been interesting because all of those types of people have been absent because they don't want to be, they don't, there's too much traffic for them.
They'll walk through there.
Yeah. And so that was encouraging to me.
The other thing I wanted to mention about this is, NCRRA has valued the right of way that we're asking for at $15,000 a year. But instead of charging us that, or it's not something that we can actually include in the grant application, and they confirm that, they're going to contribute that in kind. So we will have the value of the $15,000 a year right of way written into the grant application. And in exchange, what they're looking for is, like Larry said, that we'll be maintaining that. And then they would like to be included in the publicity of this, you know, assuming we get awarded the grant application.
I understand that there's room on the west side. But does that still allow us to potentially reap some drainage benefits from the project?
Rod, do you want to respond to that one?
I was...
Sorry, putting you on the spot again.
Got to look alive. I was just asking about, with the trail being on the west side, does it's...
East side.
Well, it's proposed to be on the east side.
Yes.
But you're saying if we had it on the west side instead?
I just want to make sure that we would potentially be able to get drainage benefits from the project.
Not necessarily. I mean, most of the drainage is on the west side of the railroad there. There's some drainage facilities. The east side, for the most part, is untouched. The other issue with the west side is you can't cross, we couldn't, we can't cross a live track. So we can't cross down south of the railroad avenue bridge because that's live track. So...
Okay. So that's what led to it being located?
Right. That and some ownership up near the depot have proven challenging, I think. It's, the east side is the best alternative. There's a longer bridge, the first crossing there on Broadus Creek. The creek kind of turns right there. So we'll have a pretty good span, 120, 150 feet approximately in that bridge. But it's going to get us from east commercial to east hill.
Because I do, speaking of maintenance, the bridge nearest the depot is, you know, half-bon. It had a tree fall on it. And then over time, the tree has gone underneath and pulled the railing down. So now there's only, I mean, they run trains across it. So I assume it's structurally okay.
Burned, too.
Um...
Well, I don't think we would quite get...
Yeah, I won't get too far into it. But is the plan to go to cross the existing bridge or do?
A separate, yeah, separate pedestrian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you. So at the next council meeting, I believe I'll be able to report that that grant application has been completed and submitted. So, and there's just been a lot of people helping with this, but certainly no more than Rod and Jeremy. Their time, they've just been putting a ton of time into this. And we definitely appreciate Kathy Hopper and the Main Street Merchants Group, and Tina Tyler Shay with her chief kids. They actually went out and did the bike and ped counts that we needed to include in the grant application.
Thank you guys for driving up there today. I'm sure it made a difference.
It was a nice drive.
Larry commented to me several times that I was his captive audience.
Got all the things you want to talk about.
Yeah. I also wanted to report that our budget workshop scheduled for next Thursday, the 21st, is being rescheduled to Tuesday, the 26th. Thank you all for your availability to make that happen. We just have some external pieces of information we're still trying to pin down. And it gives us a little bit of a buffer to do that. And then lastly, Reach held a demo event over the weekend, Saturday morning, Sunday afternoon, and Monday evening. I know that Ron went up on Saturday, I went up Sunday, and Jerry Gonzalez went up Monday night. And, you know, there were a few people in attendance at each of those events. But it was the first time I'd actually heard the helicopter. It's pretty darn quiet. I mean, it's certainly, when it's on the ground and it's rubbing up, you know, it's noisy. But no more so than the other aircraft. And once it gets up in the sky, it's pretty quiet.
Well, actually, by the time we got like 100 yards away, it disappeared. But what was funny, when we're standing there, Victor Hanson came in on his helicopter. And maybe 100 yards, 200 yards away from where we were, it was a god awful racket. I was talking to the fire chief, Darrell Shopner, up there. He was there on Saturday as well. And you may be aware that the previous week, Cal Fire had an exercise with their helicopter, the Huey. It was a familiarization exercise for the pilots in landing and taking off from there. And he said that he received a lot of calls from residents wanting to know if that was the Reach helicopter. And he said, no, it's not, which again, was very noisy. So it's kind of interesting, you know, you have all these other noise makers and everybody's complaining about the silent Reach helicopter.
Well, if you're willing to bet, he probably didn't receive any calls this weekend.
No, not at all.
What is the time on the budget workshop on the 26th? Is it 9 a.m.?
Well, I did want to double check that with all of you. We had planned on a 9 a.m. through, you know, 4 or 5. But I wanted to make... We had, we had planned on a nine AM through, you know, four or five, but I wanted to make sure there's no conflicts with, with any of you on that timeframe.
Would you better do eight, I mean?
No.
Nine.
You want coherence?
I'm pretty coherent.
Do it at six if you want.
I could do it. If you need to do it at eight, I can do it, don't worry. As long as I have it done.
Okay, is that, you could do reports? Anything from the city court?
Nothing at this time.
Suzie, anything from you tonight? Got plenty to do. Jim?
I would just direct your attention to the closed session notices. Fourteen V references Remco, we'll not be meeting on that unless the city manager knows something about it. Okay, and then items C, fourteen C, there's a new lawsuit. We've been, city has been sued by a keep the code organization regarding the, the council's approval of the mitigated negative declaration, and it's a petition for writ of mandate. And we'll be discussing that in closed session.
Okay. Public safety, I think we've covered that this evening, community development, public works and engineering, anything else that you need to report about?
Just real quick, reservoir levels at eleven hundred and sixty-five acre feet, which is, our storage, is at eleven hundred and sixty-five acre feet, which is up nine acre feet from January first. It's down a little bit from last year, but we still have quite a bit of water. As I stated earlier, the public works crew, the water department and sewer department have been working hard for the last couple of weeks trying to locate and repair a pretty significant leak on Bittenbinder, so. The lines, the lines go in different directions up there, and we think we have it fixed. We thought we had it fixed the other day, and it turned out there was some, some loop, I, I don't know exactly, but we had to dig down ten feet and uncover an old welded twenty-two inch
Twenty-two?
Fitting, or twenty-two, twenty-two degree fitting on a twelve inch, on a twelve inch line. That was, you know, some, some weird thing that P G N E put together back in, back in the day. But, they've been working really hard, and they should hopefully have it fixed tomorrow, but...
You're done on the project on Main Street, it looks like, huh?
Yeah, we're done, done for now.
Right.
And as you saw, we're, R A O Construction is going to start on June first on Humboldt Street. One of the first things we'll do is, hopefully, we haven't talked to them yet, but I believe fixing that valve out there that's, that's leaking, that we can't get closed, is one of the first things, so. Other than that, yeah.
Could you explain the R E A, is it R E A?
R A O.
Okay, whoever, where are they from and who are they?
They're from Eureka. We don't know much about them, other than they, they're a concrete company. So, they, they've done some work for the city of Arcata. They have Mercer Fraser, which we, we know of, doing the paving. And, we haven't heard anything bad about them, they...
Have they been on other Willets projects before?
We've never heard, we hadn't heard of them, so.
What, what were the bids, the range of the bids?
Six seventy-five was R A O, up to eight fifty, I believe, was Gelati Brothers. I don't have that, but. And then Argonaut and M C S were in the middle. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars less than, that's two, around at two hundred thousand dollars less than the estimate, so. Which is, it's pretty, pretty straightforward work, you know, sidewalk curbing gutter and pavement, so.
And that's going to start when?
June first.
And we've notified the people on Humboldt?
I don't know if we have yet.
And then with the contractors aware about the Fourth of July?
If they're not, I'll, I'll make sure that they, they are.
I mean, not just the whole of it, I mean, in Willets, Fourth of July in Willets, so.
All right, thank you. I think we've discussed the water and wastewater business a little bit today, water anyway, anything under M COG?
Yes, we had a meeting on the, last Monday, on the fourth. And the things that we covered were, first of all, that the county auditor estimated that the funds are up about five point eight over last year, and it's triple of the C P I, the money that's coming in for M COG. The other things that we discussed was State Route sixty-two, one sixty-two, is the Round Valley Indian Tribe easements and maintenance, and whatever it takes for the walking trails in, in Round Valley that M COG is sponsoring and is doing. The Megalia Community Action Plan Downtown Streetscape, and the Transportation Plan Working Program, the two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and CalCOG's endorsement of some funding, trying to come up with some funding for the roads that are in the state. And I was amazed at the amount, they had some literature, at the amount of electric cars that are in the state of California. And that we were one of the few electric charging station on, on one oh one here at the, at the... And, sitting at the desk that I sat at, I saw a Tesla that went through town last week. And that was the first one I've ever seen that had gone through town here.
Except they've got a screen like about this big in the center. It would look to be distracting.
Anyhow, so he got his juice from someplace, you know, I don't know, but...
It can go pretty far though.
Yeah, they're a nice car.
LACCO?
LACCO met, the primary thing that we were fighting over was the budget. I had mentioned that they are, that the plan is to give back, there's, LACCO has healthy reserves, healthy legal reserves. So the idea is to reduce the amount that member agencies need to pay in. The rest of the board is now interested in shrinking that give-back. I am arguing graciously in favor of continuing that give-back and reducing what people have to pay in. So we'll vote on that, I think, next month.
Give it to Ms. ... M T A?
M T A met about three weeks ago, and I wasn't able to attend that one.
There's M C L.
Haven't met in a while.
E D F C?
We will be meeting tomorrow, two o'clock in UKIA.
League, anything?
League has not met, their quarterly meeting or monthly, I don't know, quarterly, meeting is going to be up in Ferndale at the end of the month, depending on timing.
Finance, we're about to have a finance, big-time meeting, so we'll save for that. Caltrans bypass has not met, I don't think, or have a meeting?
I just today had someone ask me if I had a schematic for the Northern Interchange, and I told them that they should probably contact Tom Gunther directly, because last I heard, there were still changes being done. I don't know if that seems like the right direction to send them, but...
Probably send them to Caltrans, I would think.
Send them to Caltrans, their website or something.
I think it's sort of working fine.
Could I ask, on that subject, on the subject of the Northern Interchange and Caltrans, was, given that they haven't yet put any of the pilings in for the bridges up there, I'm, I'm just wondering if any other council members would feel like entertaining the idea of the existing one oh one north there becoming the southbound off-ramp instead of building a whole new off-ramp? And the reason that I raise that is that I think it would really benefit the city in terms of, well, convenience to people that commute back and forth from Leightonville, and anywhere north of Willets, anyone who's commuting into Willets. Also, any tourists who want to come into Willets from the north, or who are headed over to the coast. It would be a very convenient thing to just go on the existing one oh one as the off-ramp, brings you right into Willets. As opposed to going onto the bypass, going on an off-ramp, stopping, turning right, stopping again, and turning left, which is the way it's designed. To me, that would make a lot of sense for, the benefit to Willets, to have a much more convenient and accessible access to our town from people coming from the north. Is anyone else interested in floating that idea before it's too late?
I, I would say that I probably couldn't participate in that conversations, because I would certainly have a conflict interest.
I, I think that we definitely ought to work on the signage, is the main thing that I can see on both ends. And, with the new cars, with all of the, the things that are on the new cars, I would think that that would show up to come in from the north if you were coming from the north anyhow. Those people that have those on their cars, does it show up on your car that, that you should turn in from the north instead of going all the way to Hale Creek?
But there isn't going to be a way to do that. They're going to have a cul-de-sac, you know, no, no access at the north. What's one oh one now will end, and the only way to get onto one oh one will be to go onto the interchange.
Oh, I understand that, but, I mean, there's still a way to get from the north onto the street.
Yeah.
Onto one oh one.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, moving along to franchise agreement, we've worked on that, solar array, I think is...
Yeah, I'm thinking solar array, it might, you may want to put it on hiatus. We've, we've sort of suspended the negotiations for a period of time until an ancillary issue gets settled.
Okay. Main Street improvements? Nothing more on that right now, I don't think. Center for the Arts, can't remember if that meeting we had was, we've already reported on that?
We, I think we did, and just to remind everyone, we have basically a core working group that's overseeing the, the day-to-day operations of the center right now, while they're exploring and vetting some different options that will come back to the council for consideration.
Okay.
I have another committee report.
Oh, excuse me, sure.
As the designee to the museum advisory board, we actually met this last Monday. And one very sad piece of news is that Judy Pruden, who has been a longtime activist in many areas, but has been chair of the museum advisory board for quite some time, passed away rather unexpectedly. She, apparently she knew she was ill, but didn't tell anybody, so we were very sad about that. And there's going to be some kind of a plaque commemorating her that they'll put up. The other thing is that they're about to, May sixteenth, they will be opening the new Civil War centennial exhibit. And that's a traveling exhibit that we're lucky to have here. That it starts on May sixteenth, but the opening reception will be on May twenty-third. From ten to four thirty, there'll be some Civil War reenactments, there'll be some local speakers, there'll be, you know...
Sounds really interesting.
Yeah, and, and as part of that, there is the local angle on the Civil War, which was the internal division, divisions here in our county of pro and anti-slavery factions. And I think our county actually, well, anyway, there'll be a whole other exhibit that will stay even after the traveling exhibit leaves about our local issues around the Civil War, which I think it sounds very interesting. They also mentioned that the Mendocino's Film Festival has an upcoming event on May thirtieth with the Seabiscuit series of events happening partially at Ridgewood Ranch. And then there's also the film, let's see, Harry and Snowman is the film that's going to be showing that same night, May thirtieth, here at the Noyau Theater.
That's the thirty-first?
I think they say, May thirtieth.
Thirty?
Yeah, and May thirty-first, both.
Okay.
Okay, so on, on the Saturday, the screening is at ten thirty, and on Sunday, it's at four P M at both of those. Actually, the, the ten thirty Saturday one is at Fort Brant.
So I think we've morphed into council member reports and recommendations, anybody else have a report or recommendation of Civil War?
I just wanted to comment under committee reports for the ad hoc committees.
It opens on May sixteenth, and the reception is May twenty-third.
I just wanted to find out, get clarity for our clerk, if we were dropping off the solid waste and solar ad hoc committees from this list?
Yes, we are. Now, can we move on to council member reports and recommendations? I've got to keep this going.
I just, could, I'm bringing it up as a potential for an ad hoc, but obviously it doesn't have to be.
Since we lost two.
Since we lost two, but I've been trying to hustle up funding for the emergency water project and other water projects that are going on. I was able to attend the North Coast Resource Partnership, I believe is their title, informational meeting that they had at the Sherwood Valley Ranch, we had about their funding options, and I would like to get to... It brought up a number of issues regarding our groundwater. And it's not fast financing, so it may not work for the emergency project, but it could very potentially work for turning the emergency project into a permanent project. So I would either like to get together with maybe Adrian and Rod, and I was thinking maybe Rod, because I know he has an interest in the groundwater issue specifically, to hash out some of these issues and whether or not we want to continue to pursue these options, or not.
So I would, I would ask if we could defer that decision about that ad hoc committee until the next meeting, because we have a couple of things out there right now that we're going to bring back at the next meeting that'll give you more information about funding mechanisms. And one thing we've done is we have requested a proposal from a consultant to write some grants for two of our projects.
Okay, because, yeah, a lot of things were brought up in that particular meeting having to do with whether or not we want to opt-in to the CASGIM system, and what the positives or negatives to that would be, because I think they're significant on both sides. So I'll look forward to more information.
Great.
Yes.
I just wanted to report that the Board of Supervisors, a week ago Tuesday, adopted a resolution somewhat similar to the one that we adopted urging Caltrans not to use herbicides in the wetlands, in the mitigation areas. But they actually went beyond what we had talked about, and Rod will be happy to hear this, that they have basically raised the whole issue that eradicating blackberries may not only be very, perhaps impossible, but, but also could actually cause a lot more damage than the benefit from it. So even by mechanical means, which causes erosion to the creeks, as opposed to herbicides, which causes poisons to grow in the creeks. So their, their resolution was a bit more comprehensive, and they also are transmitting that to the various resource agencies in Caltrans. So Tom Woodhouse brought the, the item to the Board of Supes, and I think John McCowen added some additional verbiage to it, so I was very pleased with that.
I would not know if there's been any resolution to this, but I read in the paper the other day that, and I'm not sure what role the city can play, but, but our daily bread is looking for a new home. So I think that it's a program that's been going on for close to twenty years, and in, in no way I mean for this to be any reflection on the generosity of the Catholic Church for providing that facility for that length of time. But I'm interested to see if there's any alternative sites or any, any resolution to that dilemma.
any, any resolution to that dilemma, so.
Um, any Good and Welfare? Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Bruce. Well, I'm excited, because we've got our thirty-fourth annual community festival and car show.
And I got a car show.
And you, uh, this is the first time in a long time, right?
Yeah.
So I'm excited, it's, it's at, what, a nineteen twelve?
Twelve.
Nineteen twelve what?
Model T Speedster.
Yes, the Speedster. So that'll be exciting.
I haven't driven it down Sherwood Road yet, so.
You have somebody in front of you.
You're gonna be sticking your leg out the side.
It should be a lot of fun. Um, also, on May twenty-third, we're having our classic metal mixer, which is gonna be at the, um, Bechtel Creek Inn, so that'll be something different for a mixer this time, and we'll have some of the cars that'll be, uh, at the event, so, and we're having an arm wrestling contest, we haven't had one of those in years, and we've got the Boy Scout Bridge and, um, the Bounce House, and so we've got some, a lot of fun stuff for the whole entire family, and the kids and all of us, so, really excited that we are doing this this year, and that we have some wonderful sponsors, and certainly a lot of people behind the scenes making this all happen, so, we hope you all come out.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right.
That reminded me that on May thirty-first is the, um, what, Walk for, uh, Walk for Health, and, um, in conjunction with that, there's gonna be a family health fair at the Red Grove Park, um, so that should be a really, very family-friendly also kind of event, May thirty-first.
And on that, that particular event, um, I was talking with Jed Diamond yesterday, I think it was, and he said that the, this'll be the eighteenth walk that they, uh, have done. The first walk, uh, that they held, every single council member participated in it, and we haven't had that happen since, so he sort of threw out a challenge to all of you, and to city staff as well, to come out and participate.
We haven't seen him at a city council meeting.
Throw a challenge back.
I'm organized, sorry, I have one, one last thing. I'm organizing with, well, a bicycle show, similar to the car show, but smaller in scope, at the city park on June eighteenth. Uh, also, hoping it will be a family-friendly event, and we're gonna have a helmet decorating table, 'cause, uh, the last time we did it, we didn't focus on helmets, and someone did actually crash. But, there is some pretty nice bicy, some people have some pretty cool stingray bicycles with the gear shifters and stuff in their, in their garages that were brought out, uh, when we did it in the past, so hopefully, people will, all bikes welcome, it doesn't have to be a fancy bike, there's an award for best beater bike, best utility bike, so it'll be fun. June eighteenth, it's the same, you know, same day as farmer's market, so people should be out and about.
I have a Happy and Welfare thing, to sort of build on Adrian's comment about the Reach open house thing. I had a chance to spend some time talking to the crews, the pilots and the, the medical staff, and I gotta tell you, I was very impressed with their professionalism, their, their knowledge, their attitude, and, and one of the interesting things that I found that when I was talking to the pilots then, he told me that, uh, the company, you know, the company is a, is a very forward-thinking company, uh, where he has the, he has the, uh, authority to make onsite decisions about how to deal with a, um, a patient who doesn't have insurance, and he can, you know, so of course, this would have a, a monetary impact on the company, and he can, he can, you know, over, you know, with certain parameters, he can make a decision, and he can make accommodations for these people, and the company will support him, and I thought that was significant, because, you know, with all this other stuff we've been hearing about helicopter noise and stuff like that, we kinda lose sight of the fact that we're dealing with a class company, and, and I was very impressed and pleased with the way they, they seem to, they do their business, and the people who work for them are, are who they are.
So we have, uh, now, two remaining items, I think, that I was capping up here, but, a conference with labor negotiation negotiators for item A, and, uh, then item C is this new litigation, uh, apparently coming down the pike of, uh, Keep the Code versus the city of Willets and the Reach project, so. Any decisions made in closed session will be reported back out into this room. Kind of doubt that we have the information to make any final determinations, so.